Here.
Four.
Here. Can we stand for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Bernstein, would you come to the microphone, please?
(laughter) This is what the Jersey Boys?
No, I'm playing that.
Whereas Tony Award or Grammy Award winning musical Jersey Boys is directed by two-time Tony Award-winning award-winning guest, McAnoff, with music by Bob Goodyear, I should have probably looked at this ahead of time, lyrics by Bob Crew, and a book by Marshall Brickman and Rick Elyse. It is presented in a documentary-style format, whereas four New Jersey boys from the wrong side of the tracks and invented their own unique sound were inducted into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and sold 175 million records worldwide, and all before they turned 30. With spectacular performances of all their hits, Jersey Boys is electrified, true life story of Frankie Valli and the Four Seasons, The Mob, The Heartaches, The Triumphs, and the Music. Whereas Jersey Boys are appearing at the Orpheum Theater in Sioux City, Iowa, beginning Tuesday, March 29, 2016, through April 3, 2016. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the city of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, hereby proclaim, March 29, 2016, through Sunday, April 3, 2016, as Jersey Boys Week in Sioux City. I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you very much.[877.11][877.11](applause) And I'm here representing the Orpheum, and of course, EFAB, as well as a co-presenter of this, along with GMP theatricals, and MURD, and the Hard Rock sponsors, and many other sponsors, and it's just a great opportunity for us to have a week of Broadway here. Normally, we have one or two nights, and so eight performances, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, two on Fri- or Friday, two on Saturday, and two on Sunday, is a really good opportunity that we've had in the past with like Mamma Mia and Les Mis, so we appreciate your support and the support of the city and all the sponsors, and of course, all the folks, there'll be over 10,000 folks that will go see this show in the next, in the next week, so it's really a great, great honor, I think, for Sioux City to be able to do this, so thank you. And we do have a guest understudy program, if you'd like to sign up for that as well.[931.81][931.81](laughter) And it's kind of like, you know, it's not as good as Rob Zombie when Dave Ferris made the comments and sold out, but any controversial things that could come up between now and then would help sell tickets, so.
If you have a question, or if you have a comment, as I read them, state your name and address. If you have a concern that's not on the agenda, please come up at the end under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is a resolute, three is a reading of the city council minutes of March 21, 2016. Four is a resolution authorizing the environmental services to accept a water quality initiative grant for improvements to the promenade. Five is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of Pierce Street on April 18 for the loading and unloading of buses at the Orpheum Theater for the John Doerr Variety Show. Six is a motion appointing Matt Robbins to the Park, Parking and Skywalk Board of Trustees replacing Frank Feneras. Seven is a resolution approving change orders number four and five, and authorizing final payment to DA Davis for the South Bridge Rail Phase One Construction Project. I'd like to abstain on that item, please. Eight are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the wastewater treatment asset renewal, Section A, manhole replacement project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the wastewater treatment asset renewal, Section B, check valve installation program. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. The A is a resolution approving a two-year extension with Williamson Company for audit services of financial records. B is a resolution approving-
We could bid that out, isn't it?
Yeah, we can.
We could. If council would have direction to bid it. Or it would be for submission of an RFP.
Personally, I just would like to see us maybe bid this out and...
Donna Forker, Finance Director, we, by bidding it out, do risk, run the risk of the fees being higher. Williamson Company is kind of holding their price by not bidding it out. I have no problem going out to an RFQ, but we will see fees probably higher.
How long have we been in the contract?
This is our, this, we've done seven years.
Seven years. Has it been a three-year with two, two extensions, or what has it been?
It was a three-year and two exten- two, two-year extensions.
Haven't the increase has been along the lines of 2% to 3%?
Right. If you look at, I also listed the Iowa cities, the state auditor is the one that does the highest-priced one, then the next two are McGladrey, and then there's ID Bailey is the others. Those are the only ones that are doing large cities in Iowa.
The eight cities in the large, in Iowa, the eight largest cities in Iowa that you mentioned, Donna, I just averaged those out, and they were over $69,000 annually, which is considerably higher than what-
Than what we would be at our new fee.
Yes, from Williams.
But it is up to the council whether you want us to-
I would just say this, it seems like when it comes to professional contracts, we have no problem with 2% to 3% increases, but when it comes to service sort of contracts with contractors, my guy should, the walls of the city hall are falling down when somebody proposes a 2% increase in those particular areas. I wish your city manager were here rather than you, Mike, but I'm certain you can pass that word on to him, that it, what's the difference? Because I don't understand it.
Maybe the fact that this is a requirement by state law, so they, we have to have an audit contract.
No, I understand that, but there seems to be a difference that these guys can get a 3% increase, and there's no, we just, we just pass it, but others that come forward and want to revise their contracts for 2%, we, we were, the staff was so adamantly opposed to it, I don't understand the difference. There has to be some fairness.
If you want to, we can go out for an RFP.
I'm not sure you gained that much, I'm trying to make a point in another area here.
I know you are.
All right. B is resolution approving consulting services agreement with Cambridge Systematics for the Sioux City Rail Study Phase Two.
Mayor, I have, in the, in the contract, on page three, the amounts are a little bit different than the amounts that are back on the page where the fees are set out, on page 13 of 29.
Sure. Jill Wonderside, Neighborhood Services Manager. The $310,000 that's shown on page three is our, it's considered the owner's budget, or what we've received in rent funds, and so we've received a total of $310,000. The $309,915 is what they've proposed as their fee, and so that is the amount that will be under contract, is $309,915. The $310 just references how much we've received in the rate funds.
The subcontractors' amounts are a little bit off too, though, just, just a little bit.
Okay.
And here's a concern I have, and maybe it's not real, but the, the fees are put in a way that it's a budgeted fee, and then there's plenty of language in the contract, starting at the bottom of page 13 and going on to 14, where it would appear that we could easily exceed the $310,000. Am I reading that correctly, or is it the form of contract that's being used?
I believe it's the form of contract. One of the challenges with doing a study like this with the funding sources we have is the, the contract we have for you is for, is primarily used for engineering services, and so a lot of what they reference has to do with design services, and this is the standard contract that you've seen for a lot of the other federally funded engineering projects. So a lot of this, you know, talks about the nature of engineering services, I don't believe would apply to the type of study that we propose. We will be heavily involved with the consultants and make sure that those items are not exceeded as they report to us each month.
So the reimbursable cost wouldn't take us over the $310,000? You don't anticipate?
No, they would have to ask for permission in order to exceed that cost, and that is not something that we would be in favor of.
Okay, let me ask you this, on page 4-4, there are several studies that the council has done previously, and those are going to be reviewed by the consultant. I mean, are, so are these plans being updated, or how are these plans on 4-4 being used for what they're doing now? I'm just trying to tie that in.
Yeah, absolutely. The Hoover Valley Transportation Plan, since this document's been created, that has been updated as part of the 18th Street Overpass Project, so we'll use a lot of the data and information that they, that that consultant's already created as a part of this, and then the rail study, first one with the O8, is really more of a-
Against them anyway, because nothing ever comes to us but a consultant, I guess.
Current conditions document, and so we'll use that to build upon that, update any changes with regard to ownership, those kinds of things of the rail, and then also the crossing conditions. The Long Range Transportation Plan for Simcoe, that was just approved earlier this year, and so we'll use a lot of their transportation forecasting, their modeling, for future traffic volumes, particularly when we're looking at what projects make sense as far as prioritization goes.
Okay, then on page 4-10, that, they set out in pretty good detail what they're going to be doing, the steps that the consultant's going to take. I mean, is this, this is the total rail service in Sioux City? Is that what they're looking at?
Yes, they will take, basically what they're gonna, they're gonna do under this item, which is Test Four, is update existing conditions, so again, they'll take that study from O8, update that, so we know exactly what's out there, because we do know there's some changes with regard to ownership and crossing improvements and those kinds of things, zoning, land use obviously has changed since then, and so that's part of that task, is just so we know exactly what's out there, so we have a study that's accurate and is useful for the future.
Results of what they come up with.
Sure. There's a lot of different components as far as what we're looking at doing, and what we hope to get out of this study. I think the best page to look at would be 4-1 and 4-2. It lists a series of questions of what we're going to be looking at, and questions that we want to answer with the study, anywhere from how can efficiency and reliability of trail, of rail traffic thrown within Sioux City be optimized, and then also items relating to crossing safety, land use strategies to spur additional rail serve development, and then how can we use the current rail freight system and network to encourage business expansion and attract new rail serve businesses, and as far, and then also what types of tools we can use, really use rail as a tool and our duty for everyone's development.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to sound negative, but the railroads have no desire whatsoever to work with us, they've taken rail spurs out, they really don't have any desires to put any in. So we're gonna spend $310,000, or $309,916, we have $310 to spend, so I don't, it was amazing how they come in $84 under what we had to spend it, so. They must have had a genie that they pulled that number out that just happened to match yours, but I don't get what we get out of these deals for $300,000. I don't think that we, the 2008, tell me the value of the 2008 study, because I've not seen one thing.
Sure, we have used the data we collected in the O8 study for our Tiger Grant application in 2014 for the planning funds that we received. We've used it when we get inquiries from businesses around crossings, particularly with volume issues, with extreme blockages, we've been able to show data relating to that. We've used it for trying to project into the future when we work with railroads to determine what projects we want to partner with them on, as far as crossing surface improvements, safety improvements. We've seen it as kind of a forecasting tool to be able to decide what makes sense to put our, our funds into globally, is how we've used it so far.
And again, you're telling me we would have not gotten the Tiger Grant without this?
I'm saying that some of the data that we collected through the O8 was included in that application.
Have we had any kind of planning stem from this yet?
As far from the O8 project?
Yeah.
No, that was more of a kind of existing conditions, and then they took the volumes that we were seeing from the, from the sample data we are able to get from the state, to try to project forward and see what we would have for a future rail volume in Sioux City, so we've used it in that sense. As far as this goes, we have had some coordination and feedback with, let's see, three of the four railroads that would be involved in the study, UP, DNI, and BNSF have all provided comments regarding to, regarding the scope that we've put together.
And they're not paying for any of this?
No, they are not, it's all state and federal funds, we are-
I mean, we can't even get BNS, for instance, BNSF to tell us how many trains they had coming through town. Well, it's hard to do a study if you don't know how many trains are coming through town, and if you have railroads that are unwilling to tell you that.
They do provide sample data, and so we're able to try to project off that, but that, they are, they consider that proprietary information, so it is, here at RFS, difficult to get that type of information from them.
So the consultant won't be able to get that information either?
We utilize, it's called STV, Waybill data, which is sample data that the DOT collects, and so we can use that to forecast and get a somewhat accurate picture of what's going on through Sioux City, but yeah, we see that not only with BNSF, but UP, and C and Canadian National, so have concerns about releasing a lot of that data because of proprietary concerns, so we've had a challenge.
Well, here's where I'm at, I'm gonna vote no, not because I'm terribly opposed to your study, I'm terribly opposed to railroads that want to be very uncooperative in everything that we do in this community, and this is for their benefit as much as it is for ours, quite frankly, and that's why I'm voting no, nothing against your study, but until partners, again, I've been having a difficult time, they proved how much of a partner they are, where they won't let us cross their crossing with a bike trail on- where they won't let us cross their crossing with a bike trail on Forty First Street. They proved how much of a partner they were, are when they wouldn't even discuss going underneath the railroad tracks and back up on the River Dyke and making this community spend a million three to get that done for no reason other than they just, that's the way they are. And they, they only come to the city of Sioux City when they, and what they do anyway. So why do I care what they're doing in town? I'd like to vote on this.
If I, if I read your write-up correctly, this process started in June of 2013? With the, with the grants?
It took several months to get everything we needed from the railroads and the D O T and come to an agreement with the consultant as far as what the scope was gonna look like. The request interim negotiations happened back in June 2015. Since that time, working with two different I D O T offices, as well as us and our proposed consultant, it's taken quite a bit of time to get this put together that everyone agreed upon.
Does the legal department agree with you that, that this is a max of three hundred and ten thousand, that we won't exceed that? Under the terms of the contract, the way it's drafted?
Yes, we do. The way that we've interpreted it is if they are going to exceed or they have a request to exceed, they have to present that in the form of a work order or a change order to this contract to go above the budget that's set forth within the agreement, which is the three hundred and nine thousand.
And that comes before council?
Uh, if that is the direction of staff, it would come back before council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you pull this item for a separate vote?
Kayfren?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Brady?
I have to say aye too, even though you bring up a great point. It's easier to get conversation out of my teenage daughter than from out of these rail companies, so.
Scott?
No. C is a resolution awarding a contract to Grandmont Hicks with the Bridgeport West Sewer Improvement Section C Lift Station Improvements Project. Ten are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the authorized budget payroll complement, the position classification manual, and the pay schedule for local two twelve asked me by adding the position of landscape technician. B is a resolution approving a contract and salary schedule for the amalgamated transit union, local seven seventy-nine, ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. C is a resolution approving a contract and salary schedule for the Sioux City Fire Fighters Association, local seven, ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Eleven are purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to C A P Recycling for asphalt millings and crush concrete until March twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to C A P Recycling for clean asphalt millings, clean crushed concrete, and crushed asphalt until March twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. Twelve are applications for beer or liquor license. See the list. If you have any questions, come forward. Thirteen are minutes, receipt of minutes. See the list. If you have any questions, please come forward. Anyone to be heard on any of those items?
So is it cheaper for us to do this with the millings rather than, you know, bid and bid out a project and keep the millings from one of those?
Ed Piffen, Street Superintendent, sorry, what's it? Cheaper to?
Buy it this way than to, say, when we do an asphalt resurfacing project, requesting the bids that we keep the millings?
We do that too.
Okay.
Last year, we kept all the millings from our lower lake project.
Okay.
And then what this is, is there's, there's one where we buy it outright from them. And then the other one is where we give them eighty percent of what the streets that we, you know, the, the concrete and the stuff we give them, taking out water mains or street repairs. We take it to there. And then when we do that, they grind it up and then, and they give it to us, whatever we want. So if we want three inch clean concrete, then that's what we get.
Where, where do you take it to?
Canvas, over off the Terminal Drive. So they've got a big crushing machine there.
By Browers or by Barclay?
Yeah.
Okay.
And is, this, what we were paying is fourteen bucks a ton for this stuff. Now we're gonna get it for a half, which I thought was a fantastic idea.
Sounds like a
From the overlay projects again this year. It helps us out a lot on our, our unpaved streets. So I feel like we're getting more bang for our buck this way.
And is this what we're using for asphalt for patching? Okay.
This is just, this is stuff for maintaining unpaved streets.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Fourteens are hearing for the eight, for the HUDs. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, I'm sorry. Passes five zero, fourteens are hearing for the HUD Sioux City Consortium Year Two Action Plan. Move that.
Second.
Passes five zero, fifteens are hearing resolution approving plan specifications, former contract estimated cost for the box hangar development project at the Sioux Gateway Airport. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero, sixteens are hearing resolution approving plan specifications, former contract and estimated cost for the two thousand sixteen Rivers Landing Parking Facilities Repair Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Seventeens are hearing resolution approving plan specification, former contract estimated cost of Morningside Avenue Reconstruction Project. What date does this bid? I, I looked and now I forgot.
I'll move it.
April.
April fifth. Yeah, Glen Ellis, City Engineer. Yeah, April fifth.
When does the, when does the, uh, twenty bid, item twenty?
Highway twenty, Dad? I don't know.
For Country Club, you don't know the bid date?
Oh, Country Club. Oh, item, I thought you said highway twenty.
No.
Country Club is April twenty-first.
April twenty-first?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Passes five zero. Eighteens are hearing resolution approving plans, specifications, former contract and estimated cost for the two thousand sixteen paving patch program. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Nineteens are resolution approving a subordination agreement with Pioneer Bank Connection with the wealthy subdivision of Forty First and Indian Hills Drive and rescinding resolution number two thousand fifteen zero four five zero. Move it.
Second.
We had a first, now we're taking a second.
And it's an adjustment of the overall dollar.
It's what?
Adjusted the dollar value that we're subordinating to. Um, it's a new amount of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Passes five zero, twenties resolution adopting plan specifications, former contract and estimated cost for the Country Club Boulevard Reconstruction Project. I'll move it.
Second.
Well, I, I'm gonna vote no, because the majority of the people that I have spoken to would prefer that, they're very appreciative of the work being done. But they certainly aren't in favor of stop signs. And I think if, is Glen still here? We are putting up the solar powered digital speed.
Correct, yeah. Those are still part of the project.
Those, those are fine, but again, I've talked to a lot of people, and the majority of them just were not in favor. And I know they were not recommended by Public Works as well.
Correct, engineering would, yeah, did not
Engineering, so.
I, I would dare say that without an act of Congress, it's tough to get engineering to recommend a stop sign anywhere we don't have. Sorry, but that's the truth.
It's a safety concern that we had to just make sure that certain things are evaluated and monitored.
Yes.
It'll be reviewed after.
I understand they will review it ongoing throughout the. And it'll be an easy fix if it doesn't work out. I agree, but the vast majority of people I spoke to just were not in favor of it. And coupled with certainly engineering's recommendation on. Gotta make sure I got the right button.
Passes forward in one. Pete Gretkin votes no. Citizen concerns. Any citizen to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none council concerns.
I just, I just wanted to thank Ed, I don't know if he's still here, and Field Services for their work on the snowstorm last Thursday. It hit the city really hard, and I thought they did a commendable job of, of getting the streets, uh, cleared and traffic moving again because it certainly was a mess from Wednesday night to Thursday morning. So I wanted to thank them and all the workers that were involved in that, so. And I think that's about it.
Pete said it, and that's what I would have said, so. Thanks to Ed and the crew. And I can tell you that a lot of people out there really appreciated their hard work, so, so do we. Thanks.
Just want to report to the mayor and the council. I met with city staff and the residents at West Twenty-Second Castleman on the four lot subdivision, and we had a good meeting. There were some related concerns to the traffic and to the development that staff agreed to take a look at, and they'll be getting back to those citizens. So I think we've got it resolved. I hope we can, there were a couple of, about three issues that came up related to it that I hope will be addressed and can be answered satisfactorily to the citizens, residents that live out there as far as the traffic flow goes. I just wanted to report that back to you. That's all I have.
Figured I'd bring up the phone call. We all got calls from Leroy on the, maybe didn't, but on, you know, the various different city contracts we go through every year, getting an increase. He says he's on a fixed income. He didn't get an increase this year. You know, maybe in the future, we could look at maybe having property, property tax freeze at a certain age if you're, if you can prove your sole income is social security and you have no other retirement. Oh, you do have that?
No, they have to go to this courthouse. They make under eighteen thousand dollars. They don't have to pay, pay state taxes.
Well, I didn't know if that qualified for Sioux City as well.
It's, it's historically, nobody qualifies in the state of Iowa knows that because they haven't raised it from eighteen thousand since I got in the tax, tax business back in seventy-three, but it's there.
Okay. Does anyone know about it, or?
We sent out the forms to individuals.
All right. I did also want to bring up the snow. That was the second time this year that we've had a record twenty-four out of five until this one bumped it down to six. So that is pretty impressive, especially because in my driveway, it was nineteen inches, not the fourteen that was down at the airport or whatever.
That's because the snowplow pushed them up into your
I know. Uh, it was, it was really a weird snowfall because
Against that new operator.
Yeah. A lot of that snow was centered on the north side of Sioux City, more so than as you get down to Morningside and then further south. I had a friend in Salem, so they only got six inches, and that's not even that far away. But it was really kind of interesting how it centered on the north side. Wall and ceiling repair on the Skywalk that was in our minutes earlier.
Yes.
What is the amount of our professional services contract on that project? And how, how can we not just use our maintenance contract?
I don't think we currently have a professional services contract.
Well, they were negotiating with a design firm, so.
We don't currently have a contract in place at this point, though.
Okay. But we do have a maintenance contract, do we not?
No, we have
Didn't the past?
We have a cleaning contract.
Right. Well, we have about five different contracts on the Skywalk. There was security. There were two different cleaning. One was like floors, the other one was windows.
Right.
Floors and trash, then windows. And then there was another maintenance contract that used to be with C F, and I think it was taken over by
Yeah, we, we have our own maintenance personnel, a part-time person.
Okay.
It covers maintenance of those versus what used to be the Terra Real Estate
Okay.
Maintenance.
So that, that has been taken over by the city?
It does.
Okay.
We know that now panels are in place. We need to get that fixed, so we're trying to bring a contract back. If it exceeds the limit to council, otherwise we'll take it to the Parking and Skywalk Board to move forward with getting that finished off.
I think, isn't it just a matter of framing up and putting sheetrock in those holes where the Skywalk, or where the skylights used to be?
It depends on how far we can go with, if it extends beyond what's just been torn out, there's also the other side as well.
Because it seems like you could do small contracts with just a, a drywall company cheaper than what you could get design services and then bid it out.
It may come to that as well.
Okay.
Having in place right now, because we haven't agreed on a dollar amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I don't want it to sound like I don't think they did a good job on the snow removal, but I think there is a disconnect in our community of when a street opens and when it gets on the list to be done. And case in point was the, the Salem project, for instance. I'm not sure they knew it was there. And then I called on that Cardinal Court. I don't even know where that is myself, but they didn't get that done. So I guess I want to know what the system is when a street goes into the system. Who tells the people to, to move the snow? Because there's a, there's a disconnect there if, if somebody's not doing that. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
And I don't think we probably have a system in place, but it hasn't been a problem because we haven't put any new cul-de-sacs in for twenty-five years. But now that we've done a few, I think we need to, to figure that out. I mean, I, I think, I'm thinking about, it's gonna be two years from now, but at that shopping center, some of the internal streets of that new one, I think are gonna be city right-of-way.
Right.
And I don't know if departments up above, if some of that going in is, is a city street or not. I don't think it is. But you're gonna have a street running down in front of the Packing House that I suspect we do now because it's ours, going to Oler King's house, but I don't know that. And I just want to make sure somehow there is some system in place that when a street's open, that Glen, you tell Ed that, hey, you got new streets to do. Because I don't think it's his fault or yours. It's just, there's just a disconnect that nobody knows. The other thing is I read, I rarely read the Minnesota, but I did this time, to see that rental permits are going to be going up because we somehow, I always love this. We somehow have to make that department self-sufficient. But yet fire and police and none of those guys have to really do anything to generate revenue. And every year, we get to pay more and more. But when it comes to people and their rental properties, their rental properties, they don't get an inspection, but every three or four years we get to pay for them every year, and now, and I don't understand that. Why is it that the inspection department, which is something the city ought to do to make sure the properties are in good shape, why does that have to be 100% borne by the landlord when it doesn't have to be, fire doesn't have to create any revenue when they put out a fire?
You know, I think part of it's if we don't have enough inspectors, so there's not enough time.
You just hired one.
Find out how many they inspect every week. Get a boggle in your mind.
I heard he was doing a great job, that's what I heard, that's what Daryl said.
Well, I'm sure they are, but.
I'm not going to argue that, that's fine, but why does it have to be self-sufficient? Why do building permits somehow have to be self-sufficient? Don't we want some, isn't that a city's responsibility to encourage some development by not making the fee so high that we're uncompetitive with the communities around us? I don't know the answer, I just.
Yeah, I thought our fees were still below, but maybe they're not now, maybe we've exceeded what the average is.
Well, listen, if you're going to charge somebody 40 bucks for a permit, I don't have a problem with that, but inspect every year then.
Well, I agree with that, if we have the.
Well, they're not inspecting every three.
Well, I know, we're lacking on inspectors.
But it's difficult for somebody to pay a fee for, and then, I mean, otherwise make it a three-year, you know what I'm saying? Make it a fee when you inspect.
Does that rate increase have to come before council?
Yes.
Yep. I wish we could do it annually.
And then there is a house, and I don't have the exact address on about the 2,300 block of South Patterson on the even side of the street that looks like it's been abandoned, and from what I understand, it is full of black mold.
Okay, I'll review that one, Daryl, as well.
I do have one thing to add. The property that we were talking about in Jackson Street to be tore down, they have signed a contract with Lazard, I think?
14th and Jackson?
Not Lazard.
Not Lazard, Hubert, yeah.
Hubert.
Hubert, yeah, so that's all, it's all getting done.
Well, they still got to do the asbestos removal.
Yeah, well, and I think they have to hire a third party, and I think that's all included, so I talked to Daryl about it, and it was, it's being taken care of.
Kate, Mike?
No, not for me.
Move we adjourn, second.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Thank you.
Reddick?
Sure.
Scott?
Thank you.
For what? Me in here? Me in here?